I want to order the August 18, 2016 Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Ms. Frescatore, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I'd like to lead.
In obedience to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask for a moment of silence for those serving this country, both at home and abroad? Thank you. Announcements, I'm going to start with Ms. Frescatore, and welcome back from vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. On behalf of the Parks and Rec, we have discount tickets available Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more information and prices, check the website. They also accept cash and credit cards as payments. The tickets they have available for discount premiere movie tickets to Regal, United Artists, amusement parks. Also, Parks and Rec is selling 2016 dog licenses, and they're still taking new applications and renewals for the Bark Park. The fall community-supported agriculture season is around the corner with Crawford Organics. Fresh produce, eggs, yogurt are available each week. The Rec is a pickup point each Tuesday. For more information, contact Crawford Organics, www.crawfordorganics.com. The Heaviest Tomato Contest, get ready, Mark, is running from August 1st to September 16th. Weigh-in will take place at the Rec at WCP. Park and Rec will host our Fall Community Yard Sale on Saturday, August 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. All vendors must pre-register by noon on August 24th. Our Touch a Truck event will be held on Saturday, October 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Wormminster Community Park. Families are invited to attend this free event. Come and see municipal service and emergency vehicles up close. Registration has opened up for our annual trip to the Radio City Christmas Spectacular on November 19th. Register online or contact the Park and Rec office. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Monroe.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, Mr. McPhillips.
Nothing, Mr. Monroe.
Mr. Crowley.
All right, real quickly, welcome new businesses to town. Lucky Yorka Day Spot, 301 to 303 York Road. Classic Trophies at 237 York Road. Shuckert Shoes at 607 Lewis Drive, Suite A2. Havas opened their new building at 55 Jacksonville Road. Liberty Church at 1523 West Street Road. And the big one, Taco Bell, is open at 430 York Road. I drove past her on the way in, it is packed. God bless our town, they wanted it and they're supporting it. I asked that everybody support all these new businesses, the way they support Taco Bell, and we'll be in great shape. And also, one that just opened, I'm sure I'll get next week, is Bellagio Jewelers at the SMG Sports Complex. Bellagio Jewelers had spent 28 previous years in northeast Philly, and when they were looking for a new home, to relocate to, they chose Wormminster. So I'd like to thank Jeff and everybody at Bellagio for choosing Wormminster as their new home. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks for bringing that up. My wife's going to want me to go over there and visit the place now. Anyway.
If you share their Facebook status, you get a discount.
I don't have any announcements, other than I want to welcome. I always welcome when there's an alumnus of the Board of Supervisors in the room, and I want to welcome Scott DeRosa back to the room. So, good to have you here tonight, Scott. And I'd like to pass it over to Mr. Schuster, I know he has a couple of announcements he wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two announcements. First off, I'd like to request a slight change to the agenda. I'd like to go ahead and remove from the consent agenda item 5B, that is, the creation of a subcommittee for the township's comprehensive plan, and instead add item 8E to new business, which would be discussing the comprehensive plan. So you have an opportunity to discuss it and talk amongst yourselves what your goals and objectives are for that, before taking any steps. The second announcement is, I want to welcome our new Assistant Township Manager, Amanda Zermeman, who's over there. Amanda comes for us from Warchester Township, where she's the current Assistant Township Manager. She's previously served with Haberford and Hatfield Townships. She has a BA from the University of Delaware, a Masters of Public Policy from the University of Maryland, and a Certificate of City Management from Villanova. So we're all happy to have Amanda here, I know she's had a chance to meet all of you, and we're certainly ready for her to start in a few weeks. So, welcome Amanda, and good to have you aboard.
Welcome, Amanda.
And one last thing, with Amanda coming on board, I did want to say a quick note of thanks. When I first got here, we have a transition with some planning consultant, we did not have an assistant manager, we had a few other things that were, really needed some assistance, and I asked Megan to help out and really step up, and Megan has been phenomenal in that capacity. She's been running around, not only handling her HR duties, but also handling the stuff that Assistant Township Manager or NNI Director would typically handle. And I just want to thank her for everything she's done, and I know she's also thrilled for Amanda to start, so things can calm down a little bit. So thank you, thank you very much, Megan.
Megan, might be a good time to ask for a raise.
Thanks, Megan.
Thanks, Megan.
We appreciate you.
That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're going to move on to item three, public hearings. The Ann's Choice Streetlight District Ordinance hearing, but this isn't really a hearing, though, right? We're just taking action on these ordinance adoptions?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. The first matter for the Board this evening is ordinance number 731, which is an ordinance to reestablish the Ann's Choice Streetlight District. As the Board's probably aware, the township has been divided into a number of streetlight districts that are used to assess charges to illuminate the streetlights within the township. Over the course of a number of years, in an attempt to consolidate the various individual ordinances that were adopted to establish the streetlight districts individually, in March of 2006, the Board adopted ordinance 642, which repealed all the prior ordinances creating streetlight districts. And unfortunately, the Ann's Choice Streetlight District that had been established by ordinance 602 was omitted from the new ordinance. So, this ordinance, once adopted, won't do anything except reestablish Ann's Choice as a streetlight district, which will enable the township to then bill and recuperate the costs for lighting those streetlights. The ordinance has been advertised, and we'd recommend adoption by the Board.
Okay, would you like to craft a motion?
If the Board's inclined, a motion would be in order to approve ordinance 731, to approve the reestablishment of the Ann's Choice Streetlight District.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Frescatore, second.
I'll second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion from the Board?
No.
Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item B, police pension ordinance, Mr. Sabona.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the time set for consideration of ordinance 732, which is, again, another housekeeping sort of ordinance. This ordinance would repeal or amend a number of provisions of the police, the existing police pension ordinance. As often the case, as state law changes, as collective bargaining agreements change, there are adjustments that need to be made to the police pension ordinance that's established here in the township. This ordinance is a sort of omnibus re-reconciliation of all of the inconsistent provisions of our police pension ordinance. Great number of them are kind of dry and uninteresting, so I'm not going to go through them chapter and verse, but suffice it to say that this will resolve inconsistencies between our ordinance and the collective bargaining agreement, and will implement an important provision, which is a state statute that was passed in 2009, whereby the state assumed responsibility for any pension that's paid to a surviving spouse as a result of an officer being killed in action. It's presently crafted, prior to 2009, the township's pension fund was on the hook for those pension benefits, and the state, when they approved the Killed in Action Cert Fiver Benefits Law in 2009, took on that responsibility in the state system. So, this ordinance is appropriate for adoption, it's been advertised, and we recommend that the Board approve a motion to adopt ordinance 732.
Okay, is there a motion?
A motion.
Mr. McPhillips, second.
Second.
Mr. Crowley, is there any further discussion on the motion from the Board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, and we'll move on to public comment. This is, township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items, subject to the five-minute guideline, as recognized by the Chair. Public comment?
Good evening, Bobby Loftus, Wormminster Tax Collector. I'd just like to take this time to remind the residents that their school bills will be due in penalty by the end of this month. I will be in discount. I will be open August 27th, which is a Saturday, from 9:00 to 12:00. On the 30th and the 31st, I will be open from 9:00 in the morning to 6:30 at night. And then it goes into the face period. I'd also like to tell the Township Manager that we're doing very well in the township taxes. We've had over 9,902 people pay, and we only have a little over 200 left to pay.
Well, that's excellent. That's good.
So, collections have really been good this year. Also, on Tuesday, when somebody came in to pay their taxes, they left a silver pocketbook type thing, filled with shopping bags in it, in my office. So, if they're listening, please come in and get it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Bobby. Excellent job.
Good evening, Scott DeRosa, Brennan Drive, Wormminster. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of Revolution Ice Gardens, which is the hockey rink on Murns Road. Their opening day for their hockey season is Saturday, September 10th, where all their Revolution teams will enjoy their opening day. And our theme this year is Hockey for Heroes, Back to Blue. And what that is, it's, we're dedicating that whole day of opening games to supporting local law enforcement, police departments, fire, EMT, and military. And we're hoping to get as many of the public out there to show the support for our local law enforcement heroes. And the main event is a game that starts at 7:00 with the Junior A Team, which is an EHL team. It's basically just below the, it's a semi-pro team, and it's always a really good event. And I also brought with me tickets to give our local police department, and the ticket gets the officer and his family into the open game at 7:00, and it gives them a chance to win a gift basket. There will be two specifically just for the Back to Blue members. And then there's also free skating passes for an open skate that's going to happen that day. There'll be bounce houses all day, we're going to attempt to get fire trucks over there for the kids. There's going to be a lot of events throughout the whole day, ending with this game at 7:00. And then between the first and second period will be the raffle for the two baskets, and then between second, third period will be mites on ice, like you see at the Flyers.
Awesome.
So it'll be a full day of events, all focused around supporting our local heroes.
Excellent.
So I just want to, you know, get as many people out there as I can. It's Saturday, September 10th, and if you go, call Warwick Ice or go to their website, you'll see more details as they develop.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. I hope you can all attend.
Thank you, Scott. Sure, come on up.
Hi, my name is John Sidlasic, I live three houses down there on Gladwin. We got a letter the other day, saying that we have to take down our basketball net. Okay, I'm really confused about this, number one, because they said we were in violation of, we did not get a permit. I bought my house, it was already in there, so obviously it was inspected, there was no fault with it. Then, a couple of years ago, we put a roof on the back of my house, once again, had to get a permit for that. Inspectors came out, saw no problems with anything. So I'm confused now why we're being told to be taking these basketball nets out. It's cemented in, we've had people, the street cleaners come through and say how happy they are, because it's not in the way. I actually took pictures that I can gladly show you of what it looks like compared to what others look like, where they do get in the way of the street cleaners. So this is in there, it's safe, it's not going to fall over, it's pretty clear, okay? Flip it. This one's going to kill this car. You know, windstorm comes, this is protected, okay? So I'm not, you know, my children are out there, they're playing, it's safe for them to play. Schools are knocked down, there's no places in the area for them to play, and it's kind of terrible. We have a petition here from everyone in my neighborhood, saying that they're pretty much appalled, and she has a petition as well, because we each hit up both sides of our street and the whole development. And because one person complained because kids were playing, we have to take it down. So I'm just kind of confused, and I hope you'll consider us allowing our children to continue to play.
If you don't mind, I'm going to pass this over to the professionals, because I think there's some legal implications here. So if you don't mind, if you would like to comment.
I can start, and I certainly sympathize with everything you're talking about. This is something which we were made aware of by a complaint, as you've said. I don't know what happened in the past with those previous inspections, but when the township becomes aware of these kinds of issues, when there is a structure in our right-of-way, we have to go ahead and make sure we enforce the ordinances. In this case, it's not something that's permitted without a permit. Additionally, it's something which could be a hazard, whether it falls over, whether it struck, or whether it's encouraging people to play in an actual roadway. So I'm sorry you're going through this, this is not something which any of us really want to go ahead and force down anyone's throat, but once we had a complaint and we were made aware of this, we had to go ahead and investigate.
Okay. Please, please come up and be recognized. I mean, do you have any further comment?
No.
Okay, all right. Just trying to keep, I know you guys are all together, I just want to keep it orderly, and you all have an opportunity, believe me.
Hi, my name is William Murray, and I live on Gladwin Road, too. We also have a basketball net. But you guys are only going after the ones that are concreted in, not the ones that are, have a base, which would be the ones that would be in danger of falling over, which kind of doesn't work with your argument.
If we receive a complaint, we'll go out and investigate if there's some that are temporary in nature, and they're also in our right-of-way, those would probably not be permitted also, so we can go ahead and investigate those as well, if we receive a complaint.
This is through out the township, or is that a basketball court?
There's the closest public court.
Wait, wait, you have to come to the podium, you recognize the folks at home can't hear you, so let's try to keep it orderly.
All right, well, the closest public court in this area would have to be across a major street. So you want kids to be crossing a major street to go play basketball?
I don't want kids in any street.
Well, okay, so they're crossing major roadways like York Road or Street Road to get to go play basketball, instead of just playing on a rural area where there's not too many cars going by?
I'm sorry, I would advise that no children play in any street.
But there's people riding bikes in streets, other things that go on in streets.
My name is Kelsey Murray, I also live on Gladwin Road. I mean, basketball is, you know, a nice activity, it's better than other things kids can get into. Are you planning, I mean, you have that park over on ours, town, so instead are you planning on building a basketball court there?
I could certainly take a look at that. Certainly look at it, I don't know what the future plans the Park Director has for that, but that's certainly an option.
I mean, and that, and, you know, I mean, with all the other problems in our neighborhood, there's a kid down the street who has all these weapons, and it's just hard to believe that that's the one that you guys, I mean, all the rants in this area, there's rarely anything that's ADA acceptable.
Well, I think what Mr. Schuster said, we're not looking to single someone out. If we get a complaint, we have to go out, we're obligated to go out and investigate it.
Can you explain, I mean, never mind, all right.
Please come up.
I'm Mary Murray, this is basketball people. Our court has been there for 14 years. I just don't understand why it's become an issue now.
Well, it's always been an issue.
Uh-huh.
No, no, what I'm saying is, follow what I'm telling you. The court, as I understand it, is installed within the township's right-of-way, right? The right-of-way doesn't end at the curb, it usually extends a minimum of eight to 12 feet past the curb line.
Okay.
Before anybody can install anything in either the local right-of-way or the state right-of-way, you have to get permission, you have to get a permit. So if 14 years ago, you came to the township and asked for a permit to install something in the right-of-way, and they gave you the permit, then there would be no issue, because there'd be a permit on file. Someone had done an engineering analysis, a traffic safety analysis, and made a determination that the permit was appropriate, issued the permit, and the hoop could be erected and could stay there until you took it down.
So when their house was inspected, and they said it was just fine, that's not the same?
It's not, no, it's not.
Even though Wormminster came out and inspected, that that's not, so basically that's all waste of time?
They weren't inspecting the right-of-way, they were inspecting construction.
Okay, okay, so...
There was a building inspector who was inspecting construction, pulled pursuant to a building permit. It's a different permit, it's a different process, and irrespective of whether the township inspector at that time inspected the hoop or not.
Okay.
What Mr. Schuster's pointing out is very true, is that once the township has actual notice of the condition, we don't have a choice but to enforce the ordinance and to ask you to remove the hoop. It's not, it's not a safe practice, and the township can't permit public roadways to become a playground. It's just not, it's not something the township, from a risk management perspective, can allow to continue.
Where should people ride bikes?
Bikes, under the State Motor Vehicle Code, are permitted to ride in the roadway.
Okay, so people should ride bikes in the roadway, and that's...
Because the state law permits that.
Okay.
And bicycles are considered a mode of traffic that are acceptable for public vehicle ways.
What if the basketball court was churned?
You still need a permit to put it in the right-of-way. You could place it on your own property, facing your own property, or in a driveway, people do that a lot. Any of those placements that don't have the hoop in the right-of-way and the field of play in a public street would be acceptable.
So you guys were thinking, perhaps you would think about putting a court in the Wormminster Park?
Sure.
I have a problem. So I take my son to the Wormminster Park, you know the part where you cross over and you get to the fire station?
Yes.
I can't get him through the grass.
Really?
Not ADA acceptable.
We're going to have to look into that.
Please do.
And we certainly will.
I would appreciate that. I really feel like Wormminster should take the time to look at other things that are actually making an impact on our lives as citizens, instead of picking on a basketball court, which you all know are littered throughout the county.
We're not trying to be the basketball court boogeyman here, it's, a complaint was filed, we're obligated to look into it, and we are, and we can't sit up here as a Board and say, yeah, leave it in the right-of-way, go ahead and play basketball out in the street. If someone gets hit by a car, they're going to come back to us and say, why did you allow this?
Right.
Honestly.
There's somebody who was laying in the street not that long ago, a kid. I mean, it's like even worse.
I just, the only comment I want to make on this issue, obviously, I mean, I went down today and I spoke to you over the phone, and I think everybody, I mean, without speaking for everybody on this Board, I think everybody on this Board has 100% sympathy. You know, it's, and if we all had the opportunity to be able to wave a magic wand and say no, without going against legal advice, I think that we would do that, but we're not the attorneys that know the legalese with respect to this. I will say, and the one question I will ask, is there, for example, turning the actual net, is there anything that we can look at with respect to a compromise with these pre-existing courts?
I would, I would, my only response would be, we can't say yes or no whether a permit would or wouldn't be granted until one's filed. So if someone's interested in keeping the placement of the net in the right-of-way, that is willing to adjust the net or move the field of play, they can apply for a permit, the township engineers, traffic engineers can look at that, we can make an evaluation and determine whether it's appropriate, or whether it's not in the interest of the township to leave it there. But that's something that has to be judged on the merits on a case-by-case basis. And the most important thing is, the threshold is, get a permit. So apply for the permit, ask for permission, and then the township can address whatever issues there are.
How expensive is this permit?
Well, also, if we applied for a permit, would we have to take it down until it's granted? Or would that be, you know, kind of put on the waitlist until then?
I'm going to pass that to the manager.
If I understand correctly, there's a 30-day, you guys are on a 30-day timetable, correct, before you start getting fined?
I believe so, probably less than 30 days at this point.
Yeah, we're on 20.
Yeah, so probably about 20 now, maybe a little more.
So is it your intention to file for a permit?
That would be up to my parents and not mine.
Please, you have one of the time.
What would be the cost of the permit?
I'm sorry, I just don't know that off the top of my head. I'll tell you what, why don't we talk tomorrow or next week and figure out what the cost would be, and at that point, if you decide to go forward in a reasonable amount of time, I could talk to the zoning officer and ask him to go ahead and give an extension, so...
Okay.
Would that be okay?
I think that would be good.
All right, thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Anyone else want to comment? If you'd like to leave your petition with us, we will certainly file it in the office. No, please, please do.
Thank you.
Ms. Frescatore, take it, she'll pass it along. Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Well, that's what you have to tell us.
Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda, I'm going to hand it to Mr. Schuster, minus item B, which we removed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The consent agenda is as follows. Item A is the minutes for your July 21st, 2016 meeting. Item B is removed. Item C is an agreement, an MOU, between the school district and various municipalities, including ourselves, to govern the actions and standards for the police acting in the school district. This is the same agreement which has been approved in the past. The only change is that, instead of one year, they're doing a two-year agreement. Item D is authorizing payment number one for the milling project, as recommended by the engineer. Item E is payment number one for the curb ramp and curb replacement project, as recommended by the engineer. Item F is a professional services escrow release for the William Tenant House Association subdivision. That project is complete, and the escrows can be released. Item G is another professional services escrow release. This is for NTB, they have withdrawn their project, therefore there's no longer a need for an escrow. Item H is release number six from the escrow account for the active land use project for 606 York, the AAA, as recommended by engineers. And item I is Hart School, release number two from the escrow, as recommended by the engineer.
Okay, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Mr. Chair, I have to abstain from, to, for the minutes, because I was not here at the July meeting.
Okay, all right, is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, second.
Second.
Mr. Crowley, with Mrs. Frescatore's extension on item A, all in favor of, is there any further comment from the Board? Call a vote. Any comment from the public? None? Okay, a call for a vote on the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move on to the Treasures Report, Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to accept, I have two supplemental bill lists, delayed, I'm sorry, dated July 27th, 2016, in the amount of $263,626.70. Supplemental bill list dated August 17th, 2016, in the amount of $121,732.89. A bill list dated August 18th, 2016, in the amount of $1,341,177.31, as well as a transfers dated July 31st, 2016, I should say, July transfers, $1,493,842.10.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore, is there any questions on the bills, on the bill list of transfers? The Board, any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I'm going to go to item B on the Treasures Report, the July financial statement, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You do have the report from Linda Major. I seem to be given the same highlights every single month, which is a good thing, that the revenue is higher than anticipated, the expenditures are lower than anticipated. We are the beneficiary, as you know, of all these projects that have been going on, of receiving those permit fees, those usage fees, so those have been coming in regularly. So it's a very good report, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions on the report? Any questions from the public? Okay, this doesn't require any action, so we're going to move on to our next agenda item. There's no unfinished business tonight, so we're going to go to new business, item A. Approve update to the traffic signal specification, Resolution 2016-33. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These specifications were developed in-house by Pete over there. If he's here, if you have any questions. He put a lot of effort into these. I know I emailed them out, I think, two or three weeks ago, because it was a rather technical document to give you a chance to go over it and see if you had any questions. It's also been reviewed by our traffic engineer, and it's ready to move forward. These specifications would be used for any developer coming in, and the installation of any traffic signals, they would have to follow these specifications.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the traffic signal specifications, resolution 2016-33?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore, is there any further comment from the board, or questions from the board? My comment I have is, I appreciate your efforts, Pete. I know you work hard on this.
Thanks, Pete.
It was very detailed. I didn't understand everything that you did, but it looked like a great job to me. Thank you.
I didn't understand a lot of it either.
Me neither.
That's why he's the traffic light guru. Is there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Item B, consider adoption of resolution 2016/32, budget amendment. Mr. Schuster?
Mr. Chairman, periodically, we do do budget amendments for line item overages and pull from other line items. This is going through various line items in, I believe it's three different funds, the general fund, the library fund, and the parking rec fund, and the golf fund, excuse me, four funds. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Most of it is just, we were a little bit over the estimates, or we believed we were gonna be over the estimate, and was previously budgeted, and so we're making that adjustments and taking from other line items, which were gonna be underbudgeted. There's a couple large items, which we did not budget for this year. One which sticks out is the Panoni contract for Shenandoah. That obviously is a large amount. And there's a few other things in there that just weren't taken into account in the 2016 budget. This goes ahead and corrects those issues. But if you have any questions on any of these specifics, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution 2016/32 for the budget amendment?
So moved.
Mr. Crowley, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore, any further comment from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item C, consider appointments, member of the zoning hearing board for a term expiring December 31, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Steve Wojciechowski to that position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore, is there any comment?
I'd like to nominate Abe Kern.
Okay, is there a second for Abe Kern?
Second.
Second. Okay, I guess I'm gonna have to call a roll call vote here.
Voting the order that they were nominated.
Okay, the order they were nominated. All in favor of Steve Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. You'll notify Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.
Okay. Item D, appointments of up to two citizen advisors to the Economic Development Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2016.
One second. Isn't Steve on the planning commission now, so...
Yes, I think he's a citizen advisor. Am I correct?
He'll have to resign.
Yeah, he'll have to resign.
So he'll just resign from the planning commission?
Yeah, they're in compatible offices, yes.
And he's served on zoning board in the past, did a very good job.
So you'll notify him that he needs to do that as well?
Yes, that's something Mr. DeRosa's also in the process of, because he can't serve on the Economic Development Commission. We'll be receiving his resignation shortly.
Mark, you voted for him?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're moving on. Item D.
Yep.
Consider the appointment of up to two citizen advisors to the Economic Development Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Pete Rothstein to one of those.
Okay, second. Is there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of appointing Pete... What's his last name?
Rothstein.
Rothstein.
It's difficult.
To the Economic Development Committee, for the term expiring December 31, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. You'll notify him?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And, if I may, for a second. Just to the public, Mr. Rothstein was not somebody I knew. He lived in my neighborhood, but he reached out after hearing us talk about looking for volunteers at one of the meetings, and he came to one of our meetings and enjoyed it. So, to anybody out there listening, or watching on YouTube now, when they get posted, if you're interested in helping us out with economic development, there's still one citizen advisor spot open, please put a letter, and we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to item E, which we added, which is a comp plan, and I'm gonna hand this over to Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Per the MPC, the comprehensive plan is to be redone every 10 years. The last time that this township has done it was 2003. We're a little bit late, but better late than never. This is an opportunity for you to have a discussion on what your goals and objectives are of the comp plan, how you'd like to proceed forward, and anything else you'd like to discuss before taking the next step. One of the things that I did suggest we took off the agenda was the formation of a subcommittee. That is what occurred in the past. There was a formation of a subcommittee to go ahead and look at it. There is still a specific process outlined in the MPC that would fall for the adoption of this. In terms of support, we do have our planning consultant who's available, who I'd like to go ahead and use for this, to assist whatever committee, or however you want to do it, assist in those efforts. And, other than that, it's just, it's a process that some body or some entity is gonna have to take forward, and it's open for your discussion.
Okay. Let's open it up, the discussion.
And I did give each of you a sheet. This is the MPC, which just describes what should be in the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the board? I mean, myself, I would like to see some type of comprehensive slash redevelopment of plan, because we are built out, and we are looking for...
Yeah, this is it for a long time now. Yeah, I mean, it's... When I look at it, I mean, we're... We don't have a lot of open areas left. What we do, we want to try to preserve as much as possible. I, you know, I'm not speaking for anyone else, but I think so. We want to try to preserve where possible. But, you know, when I talk to former board members and former planning commission members and, you know, they... Their last plan was done, when, 2004?
Adopted in 2003.
2003, so. And it was a fine plan at the time. I think the township has fundamentally changed, our surrounding areas have fundamentally changed. Something to keep in mind, and we hear it a lot, it's like, oh, there's all this, there's so much business coming in, there's too many retail. We're northeast Philly, you know, and all... Not quite. Wormminster's population actually hasn't really increased at all in 20 years. It's decreased since when we had the base here, and we're holding somewhere around 32,000 to 33,000 folks. What has changed is Warrington and Northampton and all these other areas are really starting to build out. And when we do 30 to 50 home developments, they're doing 300 to 500 home developments. So we have a lot more traffic coming through our town. And, you know, hopefully with that, we're getting more and more diverse in our offerings. So I think the type of environment we envisioned 13, 14 years ago is no longer compatible with reality, that we're sort of like an economic hub for these bedroom communities that surround us, for better or worse. And...
And I honestly believe that the crash of 2008 and '09 really changed things a little bit, too, is what businesses are shifting around and what businesses are viable and...
Well, I... Are you finished, Jason?
Oh, yes, yes. Please, please.
Mr. Crowley? I am a big proponent of having responsible building, along with open spaces for our residents to enjoy, and I agree with Jason that it's something that we really need to preserve for future generations. When Mr. Schuster was first hired, he had, each one of us discussed what issues were really important to them. I'd expressed to him at that time that I thought that our comprehensive plan needed to be revisited, because we were building without having a plan in motion, and nobody foresaw all the building that would be happening due to the sale of the school properties. So I had told him that I was interested, and the way I knew about the comprehensive plan, by the way, is my mom served in the comprehensive plan board when I was growing up in Moon Township, in the Pittsburgh area, and she did a phenomenal job, and that township is beautiful. So I would like to give back to the community and serve on that board. If given the opportunity, I would work very hard and do a good job to have a good balance. And thank you for your consideration.
I think we just found two board members that would be interested in serving on this committee.
Yeah, I don't want to cut off. Go ahead, gentlemen, if you have anything to add. Brian?
The only thing I have to say is, I mean, a lot of people talk about, obviously, we focus on open space, and when people see properties that are sold off and then go to be redeveloped, in my opinion, and this is where my interests are, is that redevelopment, because you're taking an existing property, sometimes dilapidated, you know, it's a lot of those satellite photos on your iPhone are dated back several years. So when you see these properties, like, I mean, we talked a lot about the Wawa and the bank that's, or the credit union that's going in, all you gotta do is look at what was there prior, and any new developments are held to a higher standard. So I think that's something that I'm... I agree with both my two colleagues here, that the comprehensive plan is crucial.
Well, let me ask, is there a consensus on the board that we can put something on a future agenda to form a subcommittee? Is that the direction? It seems to be the direction we'd like to go, but I'm...
The composition, obviously, I think Kathy should serve on that committee. Another one of us, maybe myself, I don't want to be so bold.
Sounds like you volunteered.
My point being is, what kind of... I've not been involved in this process before, in this type of subcommittee, and which is why some of my initial confusion was. What is it... Are we looking for... Are we composing... What is the composition?
So, I'll actually chime in here, because I, before I moved out here to Philadelphia, I actually sat on the comp plan committee for my old hometown in Pittsburgh. Keep in mind, this is not the board that's gonna eventually approve the plan, right? There's a couple of different ways you can go about doing comprehensive planning. The group that you're talking about forming is really the working group, that's gonna sit down with the planner and go through big-picture issues, things that the township manager can pass along from the board, in terms of your concerns about balancing redevelopment, incentivizing redevelopment, understanding that you're built out, and how do you compete when it's so much easier to go to Warrington, buy up a farm, and build where you don't have all these problems? Those kinds of issues are things that you plug in with the professionals, and this group comes up with a set of ideas, a working document, an outline, that then gets vetted back periodically to the board. You can have them come in and make reports at your monthly meeting on what they're talking about, the progress. There's a lot of demographic information to analyze. I mean, the comprehensive plan we have now is not a modern comprehensive plan. Modern comprehensive plans are in big, fat binders like this, and they're used really to form a roadmap for where you're gonna go over the next, as Greg said, 10 years. Once that work is done, and to answer your question, Jason, you want to put a fair cross-section of folks who are interested in the community, people who already serve, members from the Board of Supervisors, a member from the Planning Commission, staff members, interested citizens, people in the business community, people that will give you a fair cross-section of the various interests in the township, because the end product is, the idea is to produce the comprehensive plan draft that then gets plugged back into the entire MPC process, which means it goes to the county for review by their planning commission, comes to our planning commission for review and comment by them, and ultimately lands here in the board for a public hearing where you would have consideration whether to adopt it, or amend it, or change it, or not approve it. So it's a long... This is the first step in a very long process.
And if I could add something, it's also a great opportunity to have a conversation with the community. Yes, you'll appoint people who have a good cross-section, but there are other techniques. You can have surveys, you can have focus groups, you can have charrettes. There are many great techniques out there to bring in, hear from exactly from the public what they want, so you take that all into account. So, all in all, it's comprehensive, both in the process and in the results, so it really is a big project.
I've lived here for 33 years. All of you know I'm very passionate about my township. If asked to chair that board, I'd be very happy to do so. Would love to have Jason serve with me, to work together, to find a nice balance in our community. So if that's possible, I'm just offering my services. Yeah, I really want more work, but it is something I am very passionate about, so the board would consider that.
Okay. So I think this is something that we're gonna have to have the manager's office work on and come up with the right plan that we can put before the board for...
So, is the consensus, then, to prepare a resolution, appointing a subcommittee?
Yeah.
Is that where we are?
Yeah, and I kind of think, correct me if I'm wrong, that we form a subcommittee, and we let the committee vote on who was gonna chair that committee?
Yeah, I... Yeah, I mean, it's... I mean, if being the chair means you have to do lots and lots and lots of work... The chair's more about, you know, just being charming and things like that, it's Kathy again. No, well, I mean, I think, I think, let's put it together, let's, you know, I think it'll all work out. I don't want to make grand pronouncements, but let's get it rolling.
Yeah, let's get it rolling. This would have what happens. I just wanted to offer my services, that's all.
I will add it to the next agenda, then.
Good discussion, good.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna move on.
Thank you.
We're at breakneck pace here. I'm gonna move on to professionals' reports. Township manager, Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my written report, in case there's any questions. A few things to point out. Number one, the county will be doing spraying for mosquitoes in Wormminster on August 29. That's been starting to be announced in a few different areas, as the combat west Nile.
Not to interrupt you, is that also for Zika?
Well, it's any mosquito, but there have only been two cases of Zika that I'm aware of found in Bucks County, and those have been from people that have traveled here with the disease. So I haven't heard any reports of Zika being present in any mosquitoes here. Really, the concern is west Nile.
Right. I only wanted to ask because residents do talk about the Zika virus a lot, because it's on the news every day.
Absolutely.
So I just thought, just to address that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Earlier, ATSDR did release a report on their analysis of the cancer incidence in Wormminster, as well as the surrounding municipalities. That information is up on the township website. Their conclusion with the data that they saw was they could not support calling this a cancer cluster. They did admit that some of the sample sizes they have are small. They also pointed out some peculiarities in the data. So I would encourage all residents to go ahead and read that report. I know everyone has a heightened awareness with the water situation, which was obviously recently corrected by the municipal authority, switching over to North Wales. But that is on the town... Or a link to that is on the township website, if anyone is interested. Next, I've... I'm working with the school district, and I want to thank them and Dr. Baugh for keeping us in mind. They're looking to go ahead and perhaps do an energy performance contract. That's a contract where an energy company called an ESCO comes in, evaluates everything, and they put together a program where any improvements are financed by the savings that you have incurred through energy savings. Our participation right now is just exploratory. We're not committed to anything, but it's something that I've worked on in the past, and I would like to go ahead and explore. Sorry.
Is this utilizing Act 77, or...
This could be through Act 77, yes. The details would have to be worked out, but one of the advantages right now is, we really don't know what we have here, in terms of energy opportunities. I can tell you through walking through, I think everyone knows, these are not the most efficient buildings that we have here. everyone knows, these are not the most efficient buildings that, that we have here. Uh, but just having people come in and do that initial walkthrough, which again is at no cost, no obligation to us, uh, is gonna be extremely beneficial. At that point, we can see if we're gonna utilize Act Seventy-Seven or someone, but it does fall under those auspices. I've heard conflicting reports on whether we can do something with the school or not with the school, and we'd have to work out those legalities later. One of the big X-factors in all of this, and this is a more policy decision, uh, to talk about if we ever want to talk about, uh, doing a, an energy performance contract, is these things usually have a payback period of anywhere from eight, nine, ten years. If you're going to make a facility change, if you're gonna abandon a facility or move somewhere within that timeframe, it's not within, you know, it's not feasible or not advisable to move forward on a project. So that's something to keep in mind. But at the moment, again, there's no commitment, uh, there's nothing, just, the school made this offer in discussions I had with Dr. Baugh, and I'm grateful that they kept us in mind. Hopefully, we can work together on other projects as well. Uh, next, uh, I have been working extensively on the two thousand seventeen budget. Uh, look forward to presenting some details that, and probably in late September, uh, early October. Um, I've been working very well with the department heads. Uh, it's , uh, obviously a challenge every time you put together a budget. If any of you want to ever talk to me and give your thoughts or have some ideas, be happy to sit down with any of you. But that is, uh, what I've been spending a considerable amount of time on, uh, right now. And also, since we don't have a finance director, it's, it's something I've been taking the lead on.
And I don't want to jump ahead on that. If we're, if we're only gonna have one October meeting, I, I would suggest that we've done in the past a workshop, budget workshop, open to the public, we've done in the past.
We'll have to see, yeah.
See where we are at that time. I don't, I don't want to add a meeting just for that if it's, if we have other business. We'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, when we get to it, we can talk to-
An option of, of a workshop, which we've done in the past.
Yeah, quite frankly, I think we're probably gonna have two meetings in October anyways because we have those land use matters coming forward. But we'll, we'll work through that. And if it's a special workshop, that's, that's fine. Um, next, the paving program has been completed. I want to, uh, thank Eric Hines, the Public Works Director, and all the guys for all their hard work. They were out there in that heat wave doing all this stuff, and, and they did a phenomenal job. So I want to thank them for, for doing all this work, and everything that looks phenomenal. So we're, we're hearing good reports, and as I was saying to the lieutenant earlier, after you get fresh pavement done, after that comes a speeding complaint. So I would, uh, hope residents, you know, enjoy the new pavement, but also remember what the speed limit is, and, and please take it easy. Uh, next thing is just talking about meetings. Unless there's an objection, I would like to cancel the September first meeting and have the, and hold the September fifteenth meeting. And along with that, um, yeah, I did get some questions or comments about having only one meeting a, a month, and, and what are the costs, and what do we save out of that. So uh, one of the things, I just, just did a quick analysis here. An average meeting, and of course, some of them are longer, some of them are shorter, there's, there's no right number. But an average meeting, around fourteen hundred dollars, uh, in direct cost. That doesn't take into account the staff time, you know, and the estimate here is twelve hours. That can go up and down, really, again, depending on, on what goes on for the meeting. But those are the things that go into actually conducting a meeting. And, and myself and the staff, um, we're more than willing to hold two meetings a month if, if you so desire. Um, but we're, you know, certainly happy with one meeting a month. But if you'd ever wanted to go ahead and increase it, we're, we're fine with it. That's the cost of, of having two, or, uh, every single meeting. So I thought I would share those numbers with you. And, uh-
Can I just add to that, Greg?
Yes.
That also for the benefit of our residents, that even though we have one meeting a month, we're still liaisons to the different boards in the township. We still attend, uh, you know, openings with businesses, uh, groundbreakings, we go to award ceremonies. So the supervisors are busy in the community on a regular basis, uh, beside the, the one meeting that we have, if, if it does come to one meeting. So I just wanted to make, clarify that.
I'd certainly vouch for that.
And we're, and we're all in this building signing checks, paying bills, and-
Right.
In touch with the township manager on a daily basis.
Right.
And that was all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to have anything for the, I only have one thing for Mr. Schuster. Mr. Carter brought something to my attention right before the meeting, which I wanted to mention. In fact, I'm gonna ask Pete to come up just to mention. It was something regarding parking within fifty feet of a state road that is a bit of a problem. He gave me a quick, I said, hey, why don't you just come up to the meeting, so?
Sorry to add, I know there's an Eagles game on.
It's a Patriots game on, too.
Anyway, we'll just, uh, with working with the township and living in the township, I get to see a lot of different situations that go on. And I can give you one blatant example. It was Ninth Avenue and York Road. Every day when I got to go home, I can turn on that road and guaranteed I have to go into the oncoming lane because there's people parked, sometimes not even one car's length off of the state road. Now, if you call the police, they can only enforce it on the stop sign side of the road. They, yeah, I think it's thirty feet from a stop sign that you can't park, but on the opposite side of the road, they can park right up to just about the, the state road. And it, it causes a lot of issues. There's issues when we're snowplowing, and at the wintertime, people are parked right out there. There, there's, off the top of my head, probably ten different places within the township that I'm surprised there isn't more accidents. So I was wondering if we can look into the possibility of getting an ordinance where, whether it's fifty feet or whatever, somebody who's much smarter than me determines, you know, that we could put a no parking zone, just coming off of the state roads. A lot of them are businesses anyway, so you're not gonna impact residents not being able to park in front of their houses.
Let me go ahead and look into that.
That's something that's worth the staff looking into. Thanks, Pete.
Cool. Thank you.
Makes common sense.
Yeah, that's refreshing. Okay, if there's no, nothing else for the manager, I'm gonna move on to the solicitor's report. Mr. Savona?
Uh, yes, Chairman, um, in the interest of trying to get out of here by eight o'clock, I have submitted a written report. Two items I will call to your attention. Uh, one is the zoning ordinance amendment, which we authorized back in May, has, we've gotten a completed review, uh, by the county planning commission. They're not recommending, uh, much in the way of any modifications or changes. So we're gonna have that scheduled for a public hearing, uh, and the proposed adoption on September the fifteenth. Um, so that'll be at your next meeting. Um, and the Shenandoah Woods property, we did have a meeting, uh, this week at the township between myself, Mr. Schuster, and the, the township's planner. Um, we have, uh, as we are winding down toward the end of the testing that's being done on site by Panoni, uh, we're expecting that we're gonna have to reengage with the Navy soon, uh, to start talking about picking up the, uh, process that's engaged there. So uh, we have started to try to have some discussions about, uh, how we go about disposing of that property. Um, otherwise, unless there's any specific questions, I'm content to pass my, um, microphone over to Mr. Kenner.
The only item I, I had for you, which I think we will be reviewing in the months to come, is, uh, I was exploring the possibility of having a pool put in my house. And I, I had no idea the, the yellow pages that the packet contains, that, whereas other townships, it's one page.
Yes, I believe the packet-
I think we'll be, well, I think Mr. Monroe just went down that road, and in fact, I call him.
He'll guide you on the process over, over the next year or two.
Right, right. So this is something I'd really like to see us take a, take a look at.
Yeah, the packet, I think, is up to twenty-two or so pages.
It's the yellow pages. And I'd be honest with you, the fee schedule, I don't even understand. And I'm in construction, and I, I don't even understand a fee schedule.
It, it's a common complaint, and, um, it's obviously something we're gonna be looking at very soon. As soon as the assistant township manager comes on board, I'm gonna be sitting down with her and looking at all these. Some of these could be, uh, just paperwork changes, some of them could be ordinance changes. Uh, but, uh, I do have a plan to go through all of this.
Awesome.
And, uh, I want to make things as simple as possible, especially for residents. I mean, the contractors walk in, and they have a higher level of expertise. But when the average person comes in that doesn't deal with these things and wants to put a new pool, it, it should be easy for them to go ahead and understand what they have to-
I just want to get done by July fourth next year.
Are we all invited?
Oh, absolutely, yes. You live in the neighborhood, so I'm sure. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna move on to Mr. Kenner. Is there anything else for Mr. Savona?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, for those later arrivals, Hockel Bell is open. I had a little note here. If Jason didn't say anything, and I was supposed to mention that. Um, and I want to also echo, uh, I mentioned to Mark earlier that, uh, I got a, received a lot of compliments from my staff about Public Works as well. Paul Lizzy and Eric Hines, they were doing a great job. Uh, um, you know, the residents don't see the, the amount of savings now having Public Works pick up a lot of stuff that we have over the years. And I really mean that. Um, it's really, we, we take care of keeping them out of trouble. They have the experience now. Uh, we do the paperwork, some other things. But, uh, the way it's set up right now, um, the township's saving a lot of money with Public Works, uh, doing a lot more of the work with just our guidance, instead of us being out there inspecting, you know, hours after hours, taking care of all the paperwork Eric's stepping up doing that. So, uh, Karen, I almost said Holshizer, Karen McNair had two meetings with Eric. Um, and, uh, I got, you know, really nice feedback. So I pass that on to Mark, want to pass it on to everybody else. Related to the road program, just one thing, we still have a punch list outstanding, uh, related to the curb ramps, uh, that Mr. Schuster mentioned. Um, everything is complete, and we'll be wrapping up that punch list. And I think every, everything else is complete on the road program. Um, one other item that's not in my report that just happened is, uh, we had a meeting out at Norristown Road, uh, related to Christ Home Project. I mentioned at the last meeting that the phase one, where we held ESCO, deferred it to phase two. Um, I had, uh, talked about with the staff and, um, Mr. Schuster, and we had, uh, Public Works out there with my staff, come up with a recommendation so I can, uh, get, uh, get back to Christ Home and how to complete and wrap that up. We're still holding ESCO, almost a hundred thousand dollars for, uh, fixing up Norristown Road. So, um, they're responsible with the mill and overlay, but the township had obligations to do some drainage work. Mr. Hucklebridge, I worked on that years ago, and we never really finished that. Um, outside of that, you have, uh, several, um, land development plans that are be coming up to the planning commission, and then alter to the board in the next two months. Uh, the Long Stretth, uh, uh, school property, uh, that review is being wrapped up, uh, anticipated for September, the hearing, and also the, uh, or I guess the-
The previous hearings?
Uh, done. It's just the, uh, the plumerie plans at that point. Christ Home, uh, Child Development Center is also, uh, either at the end of this month or beginning of September. Anne's Choice, I mentioned that before, their review is complete, and they'll be, uh, coming in the end of August. Uh, also, Warminster Express is done and coming at the end of August. And then a new one, um, the Lidl Grocery Store, that's the old marketplace and, for my time, I guess the Pathmark, uh, site. Uh, that is anticipated for, uh, the end of September, planning commission meeting. So that's a new one. That's a-
Am I correct that they put a zoning application and land development application they've submitted? Am I correct?
For Lidl, did we receive a full one? I believe we did.
It's a land development.
Just land development.
I don't believe there's zoning.
I'm not sure yet. We do-
I don't recall seeing zoning.
I haven't seen that. But it's a proposed thirty-six thousand square foot grocery store with a hundred and eighty parking spaces.
Beautiful.
Um, and that's all I have.
Okay. Anyone have anything for Mr. Kenner?
Just on the, on the Lidl, I remember when we first heard about this, I did a little bit of looking into, on their website. And I love the fact, uh, just since we're talking about redevelopment, that, uh, one of the things that they're known for is the construction of unique, uh, buildings. Um, so I'm hoping that's what we're gonna get.
And I actually had one thing to add. We had a site meeting last Friday, uh, nine o'clock in ninety-degree weather. Mr. Monroe was, uh, joined us out there at the Hart School, and actually, it went very well. And that was part of the, the compliments to Public Works. Uh, uh, there were some drainage problems, ongoing flooding problems out of Gorston, and unrelated to the actual development, and it spun off of that. Um, and they're actually, uh, Township Public Works is gonna televise a line, see what repairs, what we can do out there to try to alleviate some of the drains. Can't fix all the, the problems. Um, but it was unrelated to the Hart School. Um, it turns out, I think, a resident, uh, was very concerned about that development originally, and throughout the whole process was active with staff coming, uh, writing very lengthy comments on a lot of things with land development. And, uh, I thought my staff and the township staff did a great job of diffusing all that. Uh, walked out, said thank you. I was very happy with the construction, but it spun off into, um, uh, trying to look at Gorston Drive and fixing some drainage problems. So, uh, that's another project on the list.
And, uh, and the members envisioned land use, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, their response to it.
Great, yes.
And I, I was very impressed by that, and Greg putting it together, so, appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Kenner? Okay, I'm gonna move on. Township manager's announcement of upcoming agenda items. Mr. Schuster?
Mr. Chairman, um, two presentations you can expect at your next meeting. One is YMCA will be coming in and briefing you on, on their activities and how things are going. And second will be the Brad Fox Organization to give you an update as well. Uh, as Mr. Savona stated, uh, the zoning ordinance will be on your agenda for consideration. Uh, other than that, it's really, um, on how fast these land use developments can go through the planning commission. Uh, we'll see if any of them are ready, uh, at, for the September meeting. If not, it'll be a process in October and November.
Okay. All right.
So, but there's a chance Long Stretth could be on September.
Chance, I, I can't say right now, one way or the other.
Are you doing this publicly?
Because he's getting a call.
I'm getting, I will get a call from, from Ms. Brzezinski, inquiring.
So as soon as we know one way or the other, we will make everyone aware.
I'm gonna put out the bath signal that it could be, and then we will go-
The developer isn't trying to meet that September meeting.
Terrific. Thank you.
All right. Next up is public comment, our second round of public comment. Is there any comment from the public? Okay. Seeing none, I'm gonna move on to supervisor comment. Ms. Frescatour?
Uh, I was, been driving around the township since I got back from vacation, and I, major kudos to the road department. They're doing an excellent job, and in this over a hundred degree heat with the, you know, with humidity and all that, they're doing, they did a phenomenal job. Just want to congratulate them. Also, want to say thank you to Greg Schuster, since he has joined our team. Uh, we're, our township is now starting to run like a well-oiled machine. So thank you, Greg. Also, would like to, uh, thank, uh, Mr. Savona, Mr. Kenner. Uh, their professional advice is invaluable in, in different situations, which, uh, we don't have the, the knowledge that they have to advise us. I want to thank them. And Megan and Catherine for, uh, all of your hard work. Uh, I also would like to congratulate all the, um, Olympians that represented the United States. Uh, they represented honorably and, uh, did amazing feats that we were able to watch, and, uh, I just wanted to congratulate all of them. That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Monroe?
Uh, just to reiterate, I, the, I will be at the EAC meeting, the Environmental Advisory Council meeting, this Monday. Um, I know it's, uh, listed here, August the twenty-second at seven PM. Is the location for that, do we know?
It will be here. It will not be at, uh, Anne's Choice.
Okay. Um, on a side note, the one thing that I'm gonna mention, um, something that I learned the hard way, I actually kinda knew this, but I'm gonna, uh, basically is to keep your eye on your PICO bill. Um, just to reiterate, uh, when you have an energy supplier and you have a contract and it expires after a certain period of time, if you let that period of time go, uh, your rates can more than double. Um, mine did. And, uh, without me realizing it, and I don't know if anyone else noticed, but it was extremely hot in July.
Yep.
So, uh, I, I want to be able to, if I get one person in Warminster to go look at their PICO bill, um, and look at their, at their price. And if it's, if it's built, I think the price compared, to compare is six point nine five cents per kilowatt hour, um, give PICO a call. That's all.
Yeah, that's good info.
Thank you.
Mr. McPhillips?
No comment.
Mr. Crowley?
Uh, if you'll indulge me one moment, uh, Sunday, the twenty-first, is, uh, my son's eighth birthday. So, uh, because we're, we're actually ending a meeting well before he's going to bed, just want to say, Jacob, happy eighth birthday. That's all.
That, that leads me right into my comment, because my first comment was gonna be to wish you a good vacation. I know you guys are, are headed to Disney World. Jacob, if you're watching, I hope you have a great time. And, and Marie, too. Don't want to forget Marie. But, uh, have a safe trip and enjoy.
Thank you.
I also want to, uh, mention that we have a junior writer for the Intelligencer in the room tonight. Jim Boyle has brought his daughter along, and I, I think that's terrific. I love when the kids come out to the meeting and see how the government works. I think it's great. So I also want to mention that we'll go back to, uh, business attire unfortunately